This is the Eastlime Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of July 2nd, 2025. We're in the Eastlime Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. We just wrapped up the town meeting. And let's see. And it's now 7:21 that we're starting. We've already recited the Pledge of Allegiance. So are there any additional agenda and consent calendar items that anyone wants to add to the agenda? Okay. Are there any public delegations that wish to address the board? Please come to the podium and identify yourself. Yeah, just go ahead.
My name is Jasmine Diebel. I live at Five McKinnon Place. I'm currently taking part in a internship with the Democratic Town Committee, and I'm required to do an introduction. I'm 16 years old, so I cannot vote. But I'm happy to be here, and I hope to learn something today.
Great. Thank you for joining us tonight. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board?
Hello, I am Joshua Akasky, living at One Grim's Way, Eastlime, Connecticut. And I am speaking in relation to the water and sewer moratorium that is being discussed, particularly how it relates to potential affordable housing in Eastlime. Sewer is a very important thing when building affordable housing, especially when it's larger than a single-family unit, for duplexes or multifamily units such as apartments, or again, those like townhomes or condos. So having a sewer moratorium, I think it's important to recognize how sewer is important to affordable housing. I also just understand that we have been having issues with sewer capacity, and I think that really does speak to a larger need to continue to expand, work to expand the sewer system in Eastlime. Because without expanding the sewer system, affordable housing is extremely hard to come by with the sewer allocations. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that wishes to address the board? All right, next is approval of the minutes, regular meeting of June 18th, 2025.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 18th, 2025 as submitted.
You have a second. All right, any discussions, changes, corrections? You good? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. Next is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
There's no consent calendar for today.
No consent calendar, well, I guess we don't need a motion. Okay. Thank you. We then turn to new business. And first, we're going to discuss a potential moratorium on new sewer connections over certain discharge amounts, and a moratorium on applications for sewer capacity allocation. Ben, you're going to address...
Do you want me to do the motion first, and then have the address?
I think it's going to be a discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah. I was going to preface by saying...
Tonight, we'll just get information.
Thank you.
Yep. Good evening, Ben North with Eastlime Water and Sewer. Wanted to discuss in more detail some of the ramifications and some of the process that led us to where we are with looking at a sewer moratorium throughout town. We've had several large developments that we've seen, really, in the past 10 years especially. And we're getting to the point where we're really reaching our capacity between the amount of development that we've already approved, and we're anticipating to come online, the amount of development that is currently in construction, and the development that we've had that is really culminating to a point where we need to be able to get more sewer capacity. And the best way to do that really is to be able to work with New London and Waterford to upgrade the treatment plant in New London. I can go into a little bit more detail. I will preface that this is really just a night to have a little bit of discussion about it. If we're going to hold a ordinance hearing, we need to set a public hearing for August, and can certainly discuss it even in more detail at that point. But you have in your packet the resolution from the Water and Sewer Commission looking to advocate for an ordinance change to put a pause on large development. You also have the regulation that the Water and Sewer Commission currently uses and will also be used as kind of a backbone for the ramifications of the moratorium. And that specifically is that this will be a moratorium on large developments, over 5,000 gallons a day in sewer capacity, or 20 residential units. And that was in a 2019 regulation that the Water and Sewer Commission passed when it started to become apparent that some consideration had to be given for the amount of growth that we were seeing in town. So just to give a little backstory, Eastlime is in an allocation agreement with New London and Waterford in which we have about 1.5 million gallons of total sewer capacity that we can discharge to the New London Plant every day. And about 500,000 of that is actually year-marked for the state. You know, the DOC is one of them, Rocky Neck is another. And then even Point of Woods is using some of the state's capacity. So all those things have to be considered when looking at this. And when all those things are, we really only have about a million gallons a day of capacity. And so on the spreadsheet that I'm presenting to you, that I call Exhibit A, you can see that we're averaging about 770,000 gallons a day of capacity.
Let's just make sure everybody gets the...
Sure.
Do you have it?
Yep. Yeah.
It looks like a spreadsheet. Okay, so we'll start at the top. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, and we'll start at the top. So the actual number is 1,22,000 gallons per day of allocation, of which we're using about 770,000 per day on average. And that's a two-year running average. So that gives us about 252,000 gallons of capacity remaining. So when we look at all the things that we have year-marked, you can see that we actually end up with a negative number. The first of which is landmark development, which is actually court-ordered that the Water and Sewer Commission has to hold. And that's roughly 120,000 gallons a day of capacity. In Section B, we list out various developments that are either approved or in progress. Some of them, you can see a construction completion. Some of them are almost finished, three-quarters finished. A couple, such as ZDM and Parker's Place, have not started yet, but we anticipate them coming online within the next couple of years. And then finally, in Section C, we have a little bit of our understanding of what is remaining for ticket holders in town that can still tie into the sewer system, that have sewers in front of their homes and yet haven't tied in yet. Some have paid their assessments. All of them are entitled to receive the benefit of the connection when they choose to do that. And then we also have some properties that are vacant in town that are also in sewer-assessed areas that may see some sort of development in the future. So to kind of put this all in a summary, we have several things that we're looking at. We're looking at what we currently are using. We're looking at the developments that are out there. And we're looking at the areas of town that are already in the sewer shed that already can connect to our system. And so we're still trying to define that a little bit better. We have some estimates that we've used in the past, but we need to look at that a little more closely. And we also need to engage with New London to see how we could increase the capacity of the plant, if that's something that the town wants to do. In the interim, we're also going to be working on an inflow and infiltration study, which is something that I brought up during the bonding resolution, which is going to allow us to really get in-depth understanding of certain parts of the sewer system. Currently, the sewer system actually doesn't have flow metering on all of the pump stations. We have 23 pump stations throughout town, and only a few of them are metered, really along the Main Street corridor. So part of that study is also going to allow us to try to find some weather flows that shouldn't be making its way into the sewer system so we could actually reduce some of our flows in that regard, too. So we're looking at all these things, but we need to have a little bit of a pause here while we research these things more and work with New London to see what ramifications would be to upgrade the treatment plant.
Just a quick question. How long would the moratorium last? I mean, do you have like some kind of estimate, ballpark?
So we talked a little bit about that in the commission. I think a year is probably a good place to start. I don't anticipate it being much more than that, but I think that we're also going to let the timetable be dictated by events that take place, how the progress goes with New London, in terms of working with them and Waterford and upgrading the plant, and then really seeing what kind of I&amp;I we can find in the system, the inflow, and also see if there are certain things that we can do with homes that are already connected and also developments that we're waiting for. We typically have an estimate of how much capacity they're going to use, but we really don't know what that is until they come online. So this will also buy us some time to see what those developments are actually going to use and be able to factor that into ultimately how much capacity we have left.
So if you're going to go forward for a year, then do you come and then get an extension? Or is it just kind of, would it be indefinite?
It's written as being indefinite right now, but it's certainly something that we could look at and I could report back in a year if that's something that the board wants to see. Certainly, it's something that the Water and Sewer Commission will be looking at and trying to see when we might be able to have more capacity. But at the current situation, you know, we feel like we really want to give some time just to let everything shake out a little bit and see what a year brings us.
And have you started any talks with, like, with London?
Yes, yes, we have. We're actually just completed an RFQ process with New London, and we're looking at RFP right now. So we have a top engineer we've chosen with, but we're also going to look at a couple others. We're going to get proposals and get some ideas. We want to look at a kind of interim approach of what we could get out of the plant without a huge upgrade, some things that we could do with the aeration system, for instance. And then we're also looking a little bit more long-term, you know, something along the, you know, $50 to $70 million range that would actually increase the plant capacity by about 50%.
That would be something that, the cost would be shared with Waterford?
Yes.
Eastlime and Waterford, or also New London?
So it would be shared by all three towns. Eastlime has 15% capital obligation. So any project, you know, $50 million project would be a $7.5 million cost share with Eastlime. And that would give us another 500,000 gallons of capacity.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
On our chart that we're looking at, sewer capacity requested by Parker's Place?
Yes.
Where is that?
That's next to Village Crossing.
And so if they do not, they've been promised 8,000-plus sewer usage. About how many homes would that service?
I'd have to go back and look at, they weren't homes, they were two-bedroom units. I want to say they were 30, but I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
Just to give us a general idea of, when we're looking at developments, how the number is figured?
Yes, so the number is figured by two criteria. One is residential units. So regardless of number of bedrooms, you know, if you have a residential unit, we are allowed up to 20 before the moratorium language would take into effect, or 5,000 gallons a day of sewer capacity.
So if, how long does Parker's Place have to come up with their project before we can reassign that to some other development?
Yeah, so if you look at the 2019 regulation, that's actually what drives the moratorium language as well. So it really worked nicely with being able to say that you only have one year to really make do on approving the land use rules that you need before the capacity is returned back. That's actually what happened to the Hantin Village.
So all the properties on Penn Avenue are not sewn?
Only a few of them, only right down here, yeah.
Okay.
Right down here downtown.
But is there a mandate for any of them at this point, or it's all voluntary that they...
No, they couldn't tie in if they wanted to. There's no sewer main on Penn Ave.
Right. So that would require more construction.
Yeah.
Okay. And now can a developer get approval for a new project and begin any work before they get sewer capacity approval?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So this is a requirement for any new developer who has not already committed?
Yeah.
That if we don't have, we don't have capacity, that's it?
Yeah, certainly, they could go get zoning use approval, but if they're intending to tie into the system and there's a moratorium in place, they wouldn't be able to tie in. They could certainly do some sort of onsite disposal system, but that would be the only other way.
They do an engineered septic...
Yeah.
...manned system.
Yep. Yeah, and so they would be going through ledge life or something like that. A large development, they could go through the state of Connecticut. I believe 5,000 gallons per day is also the threshold in which DEP reviews the onsite septic system.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, that's a great question, too, because, you know, it's not that, this wouldn't allow development, and it certainly has an ability to allow redevelopment and small development. But anything that is larger than that 5,000 number of the 20 units would need to have onsite disposal.
And that's approved by the Water and Sewer Commission?
So the, which, the tie-in?
If they're going to have an owns onsite, if they're going to have a...
No, that would be approved by the Health Department or DEP. Yeah, depending on the size. Yep, and, you know, a large development such as that could always, you know, create an onsite system if they really wanted to progress in that path and then also have the ability to tie in maybe at a later date if that was something that the town chose to do in upgrading the capacity of the plant. And that's actually something that a lot of developments had done, especially in the Flanners area, where they had built systems and then tied in at a later date when sewers became available.
So in an existing development, which has been in existence for, let's say, 30, 40 years, and only half of the development was sewn, the other half not? So is that figured in into this figure?
I don't believe so, because I'm not familiar with any developments that are like that. But that would also, in my mind, be part of Section C, where we have properties that are near the system, can tie into the system, have been assessed, but have not connected yet.
And that's the concept you were talking about, ticket holders?
Yes.
Maybe expand upon that, sort of?
Yeah.
What a ticket holder is?
Yeah.
You and I know what it is.
Yeah, the ticket holders are those in town that have sewer frontage. And so they have a sewer main in front of their property. They even have a sewer lateral that was built by the town when sewers were run. And so they have an assessment that is sitting, and either it's paid and they've connected, or some of them haven't yet been paid, but they still have the right to be able to connect at the time that they choose.
So do they only have to pay it once they connect?
Correct. It wasn't completely uniform, but that's kind of the standard. But certain sections like Pine Grove that were under consent order had to connect when sewers were constructed. But that's really the only location that I believe is like that.
Because they have that right to hook up, we have to retain that capacity.
And so it's a little bit difficult, too. Like, you know, you don't know how much sewer capacity might be used by, for say, you know, a commercial or industrial zone development. You want to have some ability to be able to tie that in, but you don't know exactly what's going to be there. So there's a little bit of estimation that has to go into that figure. I think it's a reasonable amount to say that we want to be able to have a little bit of reserve for things like public safety issues, environmental issues, be able to tie things in, but we don't want to be really up against the wall where we really can't accept any more capacity before we start to get into legal disputes with our partners.
So does the state have other sewer capacity that we could get from them?
We thought about that, and we looked into it. We sent some letters to the state, but the state isn't really interested in giving up any of their capacity. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a great commodity to have, right? You know, and it's gotten even tighter than it had been. You know, both Waterford and New London are also going through the same housing boom. So we've also engaged with them to see if they would be willing to lend us some capacity or let us buy some off of them. Old Lime is also buying capacity from New London, and that's an agreement that happened about seven or eight years ago, and they haven't connected yet, but they actually renewed that agreement. So it's a hot commodity. Yeah, yep.
One misunderstanding that I had, and maybe, I don't know, anyone else thinking about it. Sewer capacity, it isn't so much, I used to think, oh, it's the diameter of the tube that runs down Route 156 into Waterford and over the hill. That isn't the issue. The issue is where it gets on the other end. Having a plant that can accept all that flow that's going to them. You know, we have the ability to pass that flow through our town. That's not the, so it isn't that we have to dig up Route 156 and put in a bigger tube.
Right, yeah, we've talked about it a little bit at the commission, too. You know, treatment capacity versus hydraulic capacity or transmission capacity. We have plenty of that. And actually, the Niantic pump station, the main pump station there, can pump about 4 million gallons a day of sewer. But right now, it's bottlenecked at one. So, yeah, certainly, our system can handle larger flows, but the combination of the three towns using that facility has taxed it over the years, and it needs to be expanded.
Can I ask you a few questions?
Sure.
So I've been involved in municipal government for about nine, 10 years.
Yep.
And every level, there's some discussion of sewer capacity, and it limits everything that everyone does somehow. It's this ubiquitous thing that no one sees, but somehow we all use and are all confined by.
Yeah.
And now that you're here, I hope you'll entertain a few questions.
Sure, of course. Yeah, I can understand, you know, especially this board. I think it's something that may, like you said, you may have heard, but maybe not have heard directly from us. And sure, I'm here to answer any of those questions.
Right, so if we could envision a small community, anytime water leaves a home in that community, it goes into the sewer system, correct?
Correct.
But also, anytime water hits an impervious substance like a driveway or a road, it goes into a catch basin nearby, which also becomes part of it. So this is all part of your calculations when you talk...
Well, yeah, yeah, so I thought you were kind of going in a different direction with that. The sewer system is a closed sewer system. Back, you know, 100 years ago, that was the case where the sewer system was combined with the storm system. But we're a closed system here. And we're actually a relatively young sewer system, which is good in that regard as well, because, you know, in the past, cities had done that very frequently, and it was very difficult to separate the two. But our sewer system was put in in the late 80s. It's all PVC, and there's no connections with the storm system.
So let's now envision a big business, such a large parking lot. They may have three or four bathrooms in a massive parking lot. That massive parking lot is not factored into the overall consumption?
No, no.
It's strictly when water goes out a hole in your house?
Exactly, yep.
So I don't know quite how to ask this question. It seems kind of like silly. But if there's a doomsday scenario, and we do kind of completely outstrip our sewer capacity, what could homes and businesses expect?
Well, yeah, I mean, the first thing that would really happen is we would get into legal trouble with our partners. The plant would start to become overloaded, and they would have difficulty treating at the capacity that it's rated for. So that's really kind of the first thing that would happen. It wouldn't necessarily be a situation where, you know, again, we wouldn't be hydraulically limited. It's not like sewer wouldn't drain and be conveyed to where it's going. But the plant would start to see violations, and we would start to see legal issues because we overspent our allotment.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand. Thank you.
Sure, yep.
So there could be financial, I'm sorry, financial penalties?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Ignore from that.
Yeah, yeah, the Triton Agreement that Joe and I had worked on a few years ago to update is actually kind of silent on the ramifications for what would happen. But obviously, a lot of things could start going badly in the state we get involved, and it wouldn't be a great scenario to be in it. We want to be responsible and head this off before something like that were to happen in the plan for the future.
Candace, I'm sorry.
That's okay. First, thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, thank you for your time.
The questions that were being raised, they've been great. I don't think that there's really a question that we need to navigate in this direction, to be honest with you. I understand that we're not taking your vote tonight, and we can help you.
Right, right. Yeah, I think it's, you know, something as a utility. We always want to be able to ride whatever's needed. And that's our mentality, whether it be water, whether it be sewer. We don't want to get in the way of what the town wants to do, but we are reaching a point where we really need to consider as a town where we're going and where we want to head. Yeah.
Your job, Mr. Strachey.
Thanks, Doc.
Include the part where the debate is still going to be a...
Yeah.
And ask the question about shared costs. I appreciate that, except I'm a little confused. If Waterford decided to put a 250-unit condo plant in, would, how could we budget 15% of that? If it's a shared cost and they're putting a unit in?
Yeah, so there is a nuance I didn't get into a little bit. So there's kind of two modes of cost sharing, right? There's the capital cost sharing, which is based on the static allotments that each town has. And Eastlime has 15%. Waterford has 35, and New London has 55. Make sure that I'm saying that correctly. I think it might be 50. 50, yeah, I don't want to be 105%. Yeah, but...
London, what, 50?
It's 50, 55, yeah. It's Waterford's 30. I was going to say, I didn't think they were 35. So they're double us. So what ends up happening is there's the capital component, and then there's the operating component. And every year, when we actually just did this recently, we estimate how much our flows are going to be. And then the flows are divvied up by all three towns, and then we pay our percentage based on that. So like, if Waterford were to increase the amount of sewer flow that they were going to send to the plant, that would ultimately increase the total plant's capacity, but it would actually do nothing to Eastlime flows.
Why wouldn't it change their percentages to a higher number?
It would change their percentage to a higher number, yeah. But not ours, yeah. Yep.
So you estimate basically each year what you're going to be using, and then you pay that amount?
Yep, yep. And then we have a true-up that Joe can talk a lot about, yeah.
Is that included in our budget?
It's included in the Water and Sewer budget.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Yep. Sure.
Ben did a great job. Ben's the chief operating officer. He does a fantastic job. One question, a clarification, is if we go into a moratorium, there's two things that are going to happen. Water and Sewer Commission is going to do their work and I'll do it, but it also just, I want to make sure it's, it gives the town an opportunity, too, this board, to kick it down to your land use and people and all those boards to find out, hey, town, what do you want to do? Because this whole thing is if we go forward and push that Eastlime needs more capacity, he already said $70 million. And so now the town's on the hook for $10 million. Does the town really want that? Like, there's a lot of things, it's not, you have to go far on social media, no more... The town should determine what they want to do, because, and what level we need to develop. So just keep that in mind. If it goes into moratorium, it's just as much the town, it's nice that the Water and Sewer Commission is kicking it to the town. We're going to do our work. But the town can say, hey, boards, everyone come back and report back to this board. What should we tell the Water and Sewer Commission as the direction? We have a plan in conservation development, so it's an important component of this, is that it does give not only, it's not that the Water and Sewer Commission is just going to be sitting there for a year, and it's going to be hard, but the town should, the town board should be, especially the land use and all the different boards, should be giving this board some advice of what they should be kicking to Water and Sewer Commission. So the nine members on the Water and Sewer Commission, because they have a lot of debate, and I know Ann goes, and Dan's the chair, they have a lot of debate. Well, what do we do? We don't want to stop the development in town. It's not that board's decision on development. They're the keepakers of the capacity. So it would be nice for the town to say, hey, what do you want to do with it? So I just want to make sure that that point came out, because it's a very good opportunity for the town to take a step and figure out, hey, what do we want to do, and tell the Water and Sewer Commission it. So I just want to make sure that.
Well, thank you. That's a great point.
So what is the cost of doing nothing at all, right? So I kind of feel like this is something that we need to act towards right, because this is a consistent challenge that keeps coming up. It's not going to go away, right?
Yeah.
I feel that we have to address it, but I also feel like it would be very important to kind of talk about, well, what if we did nothing at all?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we're sitting right now, is we're at this crossroad.[1791.01] Yeah, I mean, it, uh, uh, that, that's kind of where, where we're sitting right now, is, where we're at this crossroad, and, um, it, I, I think where, where we're at is a good place to be, to stop and, and make that evaluation, because where we're at right now is, is, you know, no arm, no foul, we're at capacity, and that's it. Um, there's, there's no increased cost to that, but, you know, Joe brings up a great point, if, if the water sewer commission a- and the town wants to grow, well, there's gonna be increased assessments for the people that are, are going to want to tie in, or, or is it going to be borne by the ratepayers who are currently paying? So, you know, and, and that's not only the issue on the sewer side, but it's also the issue on the water side, because that's not even that far behind the, the limiting capacities on that end as well, so, there's a lot of decisions that we have to make as a town. Yeah.
So, just for clarification, so, if we do nothing at all, just want to make sure, you said that it still allows sm- small development, which is five thousand gallons per day?
Or less, and, and let me clarify by, by, yeah.
What would that be, actually?
Well, and so, and that's where the twenty units or less comes in, so I, I think that's an easier number, uh, that's more palpable for people to, to see what that actually is.
You mean like twenty houses, or like twenty apartments, or?
Either one.
Twenty anything?
Twenty anything, yeah, that's how the resolution's written, how the regulation for water sewers written.
It doesn't matter how.
Right, right, it doesn't. Yeah, and I mean, most developers, when they, even when they do apartments, they're two or three bedroom. Um, you know, a house, a large, a single-family house can use a little bit more, especially if there's a large family there, but, um, they're, they're not all that different.
This, this may be a question for more the science fiction realm, but is there any kind of, uh, effort that you know about in the nation or the world about like, uh, gray water reclamation or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, I mean, California's doing a lot of those things.
I'm sorry, so what'd you say?
California's doing a lot of those things, because of those water shortages out there.
Is that, um, ten years away, is that something municipal governments could wo- work up to?
No, the technology's there now, um, it's just really cost prohibitive. You know, if we were to look at doing something like that, it would be more cost-effective to simply increase the plant's capacity.
And just because I'm a nerd, and this stuff's interesting to me, and probably not to the other members here or anyone listening at home, gray water is what goes down your sink, as opposed to what goes down your toilet is.
Right.
Not gray water.
Right, yeah, black water, yeah, yeah, so it'd be like, you know, something coming out of your sink, or something from your shower, or, you know.
But you could use shower water to fill up the tank in your toilet, which then you could use to.
Yeah.
So you're recycling water.
And there, there's some, uh, I think Foxwoods actually does something similar to that, they have a reuse system, uh, that they use, and, you know, again, these, these things are out there, um, but, uh, it, they are cost prohibitive.
Because the technology's new.
Um, the technology's new, and then it's intensive, I mean.
The infrastructure's not really there yet for us.
It's, it's just an intensive process, it's like trying to make, you know, why wastewater costs almost twice as much to treat as drinking water is to produce, you know, there's a lot of steps that are involved in, in treating wastewater. You know, it's, it's always a saying of mine, it says, it's, it's hard to make dirty water clean, it's a lot easier to make clean water cleaner.
That would probably, um, be something that falls into the plan of conservation development for like, the future of East Lime. This is not something we would do with this round of this problem.
Right.
Are you saying that's accurate?
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, the only time against something like that, it has an economy of scale, is in a really large development, or, or, you know, a casino where you're trying to do something like that, and water's extremely limited. Um, so, I, I, I think that we would explore other avenues before that, but there's certainly the possibility that it could be, uh, an approach that we'd also use in the future. You know, desalinization is also something that's discussed, but, um, then you have environmental concerns with the brackish water that's produced from that, and how that, how energy-intensive that process is. Um, there's one remaining well source in town, that's over by Plant Stand, actually, the, the, uh, town and Joe have been working on that project to rehabilitate that dam, and, um, and that, that's really the last area that could, could, uh, allow for another municipal well for our water production needs, um, but, um, you know, we'd have to start thinking about all these things as well down the road.
That RFQ you were talking about?
Yeah.
What is that for specifically?
Um, it's, so, it's, it's a part of a process that allows you, you know, it's, it's, it's a best practice, for one, it's a your request for qualifications, you know, you want to see who's out there, and who's, who's done projects. Oh, to, to upgrade the, the treatment plant capacity.
So is this something that you're doing in concert with the other towns?
Yes.
To do, okay, so you're doing, like, basically an RFQ and saying, hey, we want this done?
Yep.
And then you're gonna get the response, and then bring it to the water and sewer?
Right.
Basically, and then see where it lands from there?
Yeah, exactly, and, and we're looking at really two phases, we're looking at an immediate phase of small upgrades that might be able to be done, you know, kind of the low-hanging fruit, of what could be done at the plant. Um, I worked at the plant for a while, so I know that there's, there's certain things that could be done to enhance its capacity, um, but only, only in a small way, you know, only a few hundred thousand gallons. Beyond that, you're talking more clarifiers, a second iteration base, and, um, and the costs really get high at that point.
And you would have the costs, like, for, okay, this is low-hanging fruit, this is what that will cost?
Yep.
To do this, this is what will cost, this is what's gonna cost New London, East Lime, and Waterford?
Exactly, yep.
Do, do you have some sense of, I mean, most people aren't familiar with, with the plant, but anyone that's driven up Route nine after Middletown, going north to Harp, the, the Medabasset district, you can see the big clarifiers, all those big, uh, round pools. That's a, that's a sewage treatment plant, after you get through the lights at Middletown. Um, next time we go on up, you take a look at it, and you can see the size of, of, you know, those tanks, and just the infrastructure that is there, and, and what's required to expand a plant, so it gives you some idea of the magnitude of the cost.
Yeah.
Um, that's what they look like, that's, that's a sewage plant.
Yeah.
One thing I did want, I, I wanted to bring up one thing, just so, from an understanding of the water and sewer. You know, you guys are representing the whole town, there's seven thousand proxy water customers, there's probably about ten thousand households in town. Um, and there's probably about seven thousand water customers, but there's only thirty-five hundred sewer customers, so bear in mind, like, if we're, you said something about borne by the ratepayers?
Yeah.
There's only thirty-five hundred of them, it's, it's so small, and that system, our system, our beloved system has twenty-three pump stations and pumps all our sewage ten miles through two towns, and we have to pay as we go, so our rates for sewer are already very high in Connecticut for what it is, but when I say it, we have twen- I mean, New London has what? Five pump, pump, five pump stations, we have twenty-three. So, all those pump stations take electricity, which is now going through the roof, has maintenance, maintenance and all the stuff, so, um, part of this whole thought is, if we're gonna expand and expand the treatment plant, it's gonna be seven million, there's a very good chance it's gonna be borne by the town. So that's what this year, so, because those customers, unless we turn, our, our, our rates would go quadruple if we, so that's, it's a very important thing to know, whatever capacity increases, the town is gonna have to be looking at that, or else it's gonna blow up the rates, so that's something that we really have to look at, is, is how we're gonna expand the capacity, but just to say we're gonna expand the plant, like this RFQ, would have a big impact on the town of East Line with cost, so.
Isn't that the purpose of the moratorium?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's exactly, for everyone to understand the ramifications, but that's why the water sewer commission's the one that doles out the capacity, but that's where it ties to this board and the board of finance and all the land uses. This, this, this decision, this in moratorium gives the town and the water sewer commission a breath to be able to figure this stuff out in meetings where no one, developers are coming in, because if a developer right now submits something without this moratorium, and we say no, they can sue us. They can legal action against us, we're trying to prevent that, so we can just have a chance to do this without getting sued every time an application comes in. So, that's basically where we're at.
Yeah, but how can you?
And then that timeframe will allow us to find out with the cost.
That's the critical thing, is have a chance.
But if you get sued, right, and you don't have capacity, I mean, what?
But that's up to, we have capacity now, so they can say, well, why can't you give us a little bit? So, and then the judge is gonna tell us whether that's right or not, so why not just go into moratorium where we have a chance to be able to, like, how much, as you see this thing?
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Then a judge might say, well, if someone hasn't hooked up yet.
Yeah, no, Mike, that's what I'm, yeah.
So it's, so it's, this is very important to get into moratorium, to be able to have the peace, to be able to make this important decision for the town. Water and sewer commission will do our part, the town can do their part, and we can have a good, sound, um, decision for the town. It's gonna have a financial impact no matter what, and if you do nothing, fine, if you, it's gonna have a, a little bit of impact on the growth of the grant list, but if we do stuff, then other services are gonna be added, more police, more school, so this is a very important thing, and it really is gonna dictate how, where East Line goes, so.
Now, you said we have twenty-three pump?
Pump stations.
Now, is that because East Line is, is expansive?
No, it's, it's the geography, it's, it has to, it's the geography, New London is on a hill, everything goes downhill. So it's the geography of everything, like, in the beach areas, you, you, you need a pitch on the pipe, because so you can't just keep going sixty feet into the ground, then you have to get a pump station to lift it to the next one, so that's. So we have all these spots in town, I mean, we have, we have sewer all the way up to the high school, so how does it get here? It can't go all gravity, this town isn't that on a hill, so, that's why you need pump stations to get.
So there's no way to consolidate pump stations or anything because of the?
Because unless we can determine how to go, have it go uphill, you need pump stations.
But that's part of the problem, you, you, you get down near Dad's restaurant, that pump station right there, that's sending all that fluid. Can you go up Lager Hill? You've got to develop the hydraulic head to force all of that sewage up and over that, let's get something on the other side of that hill.
It goes, it goes gravity.
It's about, it's gravity feed into New London from there, but we have to get it up over that hill.
It's about a hundred and seventy-five feet or so of elevation difference between Niatic pump station and Lager Hill.
And that's electricity to, to, to fire up those pumps, to, I mean, it's very expensive.
Those pumps take a lot of electricity.
Takes a lot of juice to.
Twenty-three pump stations, pumping a ten, I mean, New London charges it for the flow to go through there, so I, and I'm very mindful of the sewer budget, and we're doing a very good job of water, so we're trying to keep the cost down, but this is gonna be a big impact, so that's why we're here.
But it, you know, there are larger and very large implications, and, you know, Joshua pointed out tonight earlier in delegations that, you know, uh, sewer capacity is a constrictor on certain types of development. Um, and so, one of the questions that has been asked ultimately is, what is the vision for the town? Now, that's not why we're doing it, it's, but it is something that people need, keep in the back of your mind, how uh, how aggressively should we or could we push for expanded sewer capacity? But for the moment, our, our problem is that we're in a negative position, uh, uh, you know, and, and legally, we could, uh, we could have a problem for ourselves if we, if we don't do something, and start to figure it out.
And the next step here would be to get input from the public in a, in a public hearing about this moratorium, before we would take a step.
Yeah, we would need a motion for, to set the public hearing.
And that would be the next step here tonight, uh, if we, once we leave this discussion.
And then would you present, like you did tonight, to the public?
Yeah, yep, I would, I could go into more or less detail depending on what questions are asked, and that sort of thing, yep.
We'd be looking for a vote if possible, I think.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and then after, after the public hearing closes, then we would look for a vote on the resolution, or on the ordinance, so you should say. That, and that's why, that's also why we're before the board of selectmen, because this is an ordinance, not simply a water and sewer resolution.
So can we move forward and, and set that?
Yeah, we could schedule the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I.
Unless there's any other questions for Ben and Joe?
Yes.
Anyone, okay, all right, then let's, uh.
I didn't mean to call the question here, or like, cut you off.
Oh, yeah, no.
I was curious.
It's good conversation.
No, it's, it's an important conversation.
I think, I think you have draft language in your, your bag, it's, right?
I just, I guess, one more question.
Yeah, of course.
So, we set this up, the public hearing, and then, from there, we would, after the public hearing, set the moratorium, is that what you're saying?
We would vote.
We would vote on that?
Yep.
And at that point, then, we would have the time to figure out where the town is going, where we're headed, between water and sewer, and between everything else, because it can't just be the customers who are paying for everything. The town obviously has to step in, is that?
It would, it would give us time to figure all those things out, yes.
Okay.
Have a larger discussion.
Yeah, exactly, this is really the start of that conversation.
Maybe I'm jumping ahead, but what, what I would want to do, um, and I guess this is something we can discuss with the board later, is make like a subcommittee up, because sometimes, you know, you have twenty minutes here, but you know how we do with the capital improvement?
Yeah.
Program, like, get a subcommittee of maybe members of the board of selectmen, water and sewer, different.
Yeah.
You're saying, once the?
I was gonna say, we, we, uh.
Once the moratorium's in place, we kind of really sit down and discuss it, and, because I think that it's not enough just to have people come in for twenty minutes here, or go to twenty minutes in the water and something. Like, I think there has to be kind of like a sit-down where, you know, like the
Yeah, of course.
Experts, experts talk.
It's a big discussion.
That, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't think it can be done just in.
All right, great.
And we do have a sewer capacity subcommittee with water and sewer that's been meeting, and, and we would certainly, yeah, and we would certainly want some input from, you know, a board member or two, or whatever the board of selectmen chooses.
But we don't want to give the illusion to the public that this matter has already been decided, we want the public.
No, 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 not at all, no, no, I'm just saying.
But, you know, the, the next conversations.
That's not what I was trying, I'm just saying that it's, if we're, if it does go forward, then I just want to make sure that it's really well thought out, transparent, and, you know.
Yeah, and, and, and those, those subcommittees would also be public meetings.
Yeah, they're posted, they're posted agendas.
It would be the same, yeah, public was always invited.
Yeah, and that's good, okay, all right, so, um, I'll move to the following. Town of East Line Board of Selectmen notice of, what am I, public hearing. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Line Board of Selectmen at seven PM on August sixth, twenty twenty-five, at the East Line Town Hall, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niatic, Connecticut, to consider the following. Ordinance establishing moratorium on new sewer connections over certain limits, and on applications for allocation of wastewater treatment capacity. Copies of the full text of the proposed ordinance are on file for public inspection at the office of the East Line Town Clerk, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niatic, Connecticut, and at www dot E L Town Hall dot com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at East Line, Connecticut, the second day of July, twenty twenty-five, East Line Board of Selectmen.
Do we have a second? Any additional discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, Joe, thanks for being here tonight.
See you in about a month.
Yeah. You take care. All right, all righty, uh, okay, next, ex officio reports. I don't have any tonight. Anybody have ex officio?
Nothing.
We're all good? Okay.
All right.
All right, uh, first selectman's report, I do have a couple of things. So today, uh, we filed, uh, for what they call a Safer Grant, and that stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire Emergency Response, uh, Grant. And if we are successful, it'll, it'll help pay for three additional firefighters. Uh, in year one, uh, so that, that addition, three additional firefighters, it costs the town about four hundred and eleven, in round numbers, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. In year one, a federal grant would pay three hundred and eight thousand of it, three oh eight, five ninety-two. Uh, we would be responsible for a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four. In year two, uh, the feds would again pay three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-two, and we would pay a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four, so that totals again, four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six. In year three, it shifts, and, uh, the feds would pay a hundred and forty-four thousand, zero, zero, nine, and we, we would be responsible for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-six. Um, again, four hundred and eleven thousand, four fifty-six. So over the life of this grant, we would receive seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. We would pay four hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four, but it would allow us to immediately build up our fire service by three firefighters, and then give us a way to, um, ease into that staffing over three-year period. And, you know.
Great.
So it's, uh, we applied for it, it was a lot of work, I want to thank Kevin and Bill Bundy, uh, they, they put a lot of effort into it, and it got submitted today, so, um, let's see if we get it, and I think it would be a real, uh, step up and help for our, our fire service, so I wanted to report that. Another thing is, uh, the Lions Art Show will be right out here, um, on the fifth and the sixth, and then we have Celebrate East Line coming up on seven nineteen. Uh, the other thing you might have noticed is, we are nearing the next phase of the ADA compliance. We've, the, the bathrooms upstairs here are nearly completed, uh, by next week, they will be functioning, and they'll be ADA compliant bathrooms. Uh, you can see the ramp out in front of the building, uh, we have some signage up, the handicap parking signage is, is up. Uh, we're waiting for the rails to come in, the concrete has secured just a little bit more, and then they can drill into it and put up the railings, and open up that ramp, and the next phase after that will be, immediately, uh, after next week, they'll start downstairs in the basement, making the bathrooms downstairs ADA compliant, and we'll be putting in a, a chairlift, uh, up in the foyer. So if someone's in a wheelchair, they can get down to the, to the bottom floor. So if someone's in a wheelchair, they can get down to the, to the bottom floor if they want to go to land use or?
That's great.
Yeah, so this is going to be fully compliant, and hopefully all these changes will be done by the, by the end of October, sooner than that, but that's our deadline. One other thing, I just pointed out to anyone that's listening, we're going to see a lot of activity coming up on Route 161, on the, under the underpass. The next phase is starting with the bridge, so right now we have one new, a third of the new bridges built. They're going to be putting up steel for the second part of that bridge, so then two lanes are up, they're going to add the next two lanes. And so when they put that steel up, it'll be at night, and for about two weeks at night, Route 161 will be blocked off, and you won't be able to pass down Route 161. So just be aware of that, that's going to be coming up towards about three weeks, towards the middle to the end of July. But once that's done, 161 will open up, and then the next big thing, we'll talk about this later, will be in October, they're going to shut down Exit 74. So if you're coming from Old Sabre going to New London, Exit 74 that you take now is going to be closed, it'll be closed for good. You won't be taking that exit anymore. Two weeks later, the new Exit 74 will reopen, and that Exit 74 will be 12 feet higher than the one you're on right now. So it'll meet the, the new grade of the highway, which is 12 feet higher. That exit will be the same grade as the highway, and it'll be, it'll be about two weeks that, for them to open up that, that new Exit 74. So there'll be a lot of activity and some interruption towards the, the end of October, and then in the next couple of weeks at night for 161. So that's my report, yeah.
So there are people who live there and have businesses on 161. Some of them, like Smokey O'Grady's operates at night primarily.
Right.
What sort of disruption could they expect?
Well, the blockage will be right at the bridge itself, so, which side is Smokey's on?
I think the north side.
The left going.
You have to go under the bridge, right?
From here, you'd have to go under the bridge.
Under the bridge, okay. So, I mean, you could go down to Exit 73 and cross over.
So it's not like there's going to be a complete blockage, these people can't leave their homes kind of thing?
No, no, it just be, if you are going from here to Smokey's, you, you couldn't cross under that bridge. You'd have to go the long way around.
Okay.
What's important for, for the town and our consideration is for the ambulance and fire service. And so we're going to be meeting this week to make accommodations on how we're going to handle it. There's a couple of different ideas, but, you know, we're thinking that through, because we have one fire station north of that and one south of it. How do we, how do we manage those, you know, eight hours a, at night when that road will be blocked?
That's a good, good consideration.
So, yeah, so we're, we're, we're going to noodle that out and figure out the best and most efficient way to do it, to stay safe, to get through that phase.
Okay.
I just have a question about the SAFER grant. Is that a state grant or a federal grant?
Federal.
Federal?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
It's a federal grant, yeah.
Any chance it'll be on the chopping block or is it possible to predict?
I think we have a shot at it, so, yeah, I think we have, you know, they did, they did a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of stuff here. So let's hope we get it and that'll.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, give us a wake up. Communications. So there was a, a report that is available in my office, I think.
Yeah.
It's, it's about inch thick, but it's for a notice of proposed telecommunications facility at 306 Flanders Road in Eastline, Connecticut. That's, well, speaking of Smokey O'Grady's, it's in there, it's behind it. Yep, so it would be a communications tower. If you study that book, and I have one too, if someone wants to borrow mine.
I read it, yeah.
It shows all the pictures and, you know, the pros and cons of it, so we'll see where that goes, but I want everyone to be aware of it since I could see that.
Is there anybody to talk to us about that or no?
I think right now they're in the application process. Maybe we can schedule someone from, was it, I forget which communication company it was.
It said AT&amp;T and Verizon.
Okay, so.
I, I, I just said they had like 16 different sites that they were?
Considering.
Considering, and then they said, well, the interest, the owner showed no interest in it. And so did, my question was, did they approach all those different owners and say, hey, can we, you know, put itself power here or, do you know what I mean?
That's my assumption, that they would have approached some of the.
They would have approached them.
Yeah.
I think that that, oh, it was stated in the report, that those were, that a request was made and it would be rejected by the owners for whatever reason, but I think it would be interesting to know, because I believe it was 16 sites.
Correct.
That they said on, no, no, thank you.
Yeah.
So I agree with Ann that, yeah, I think it would behoove us to have some additional information. I, I had several questions to bring up, and I did not want to bring them up tonight because I didn't think that everybody would have had the chance to read that report, but it is quite lengthy. It took me quite, I couldn't read it all in one session, but it's very informative. And I will say that they did a very thorough job, I think, in searching this out and stating what some of the concerns might be.
Yes.
This is, this is a land use issue, right? Like this is going to pass through other boards before even, it won't even get before.
And citing, Citing Council, I believe, has to pass on it, not just, you know, not just town of Eastline.
Yeah.
There's other entities that have to look at it. I don't know, Curra looks at it?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess my concern, and I, I guess this is what my, kind of my questions are, because I don't know the ins and outs of cell towers, but it says like, there's like a daycare care lot within 250 feet of the proposed site for this. Eastline High School's four tenths of a mile to the north of it. I guess they did do a, they called it a balloon test in December of '24, and they flew a, I wrote this down because I didn't understand it.
Yeah.
Three-foot helium-filled balloon to the top of the elevation of the proposed tower height, which is 150 feet AGL. And they changed proposed tower height based on that to 135 feet. So those are just.
I noted that also, 135 feet, but I don't have anything to reference that to. Is that like four stories, five stories?
13 stories.
13, yeah.
They had the picture of it, but that was, yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to judge.
Yeah.
So is there a timeframe on this, like, or what, like?
I really don't know. I mean, I just got this thing and it was sort of, I was surprised by it. So they were mandated to send us a copy. I think, I think it would be wise to maybe invite them in to make a presentation to us, and then also, I think we need to identify what other, who else is involved in, in, in the decision, land use planning, zoning.
Yeah.
You know, public utilities, I don't know if, if, I don't think, I don't know if it's a public utility or, might be a, I'm not sure how that plays out, but it's Curra.
Well, it's Verizon, so it's.
Right, but the Citing Council too, I mean, there's other state agencies that regulate cell phone towers, so, and I'm not conversant on it, as I sit here tonight, but I think we need to find out a little more about that and see who else is going to be.
Yeah, no, I agree.
If anything else comes down the pike, it sounds like this board is curious.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll see where, I mean, this is the first tower that I've been involved in, I can recall.
They, they had a whole list in the, in the book of all the different towers that are in the area.
Yeah.
We had, we have one, we have one off of Manched Highway.
They said Brainerd Road had one that was similar to the one that they're proposing.
Yeah.
But I didn't know where, I don't know where Brainerd Road is, but I was thinking it.
That's, yeah, that's, yep, well, I'm sure you know where it is.
Yeah, so just to see it.
So be aware of this and we'll, you know, keep an eye on it, and maybe at some point it would be appropriate to invite them in and maybe make a presentation to us? Is that something you would like that we should follow up to?
Yeah, I think so, I, because it's, yeah, I have questions and some.
Yeah, I think we all.
Other people do too.
Well, one of the things that they had mentioned in the report, things that, they mentioned things that would not be affected, and one of those was the Brookside Farm. And this tower is very high, and I, you know, Brookside Farm, they, they've worked so hard to try to rebuild the character of the town, what it was like in the 1800s, and certainly vision of a tower like this would certainly not help the atmosphere that they're trying to, trying to recreate.
Maybe they could disguise it as a smokestack.
Maybe make it look like a pine tree.
Yeah, pine, oh, a pine tree. Oh, yeah, no, you're, you're right. I mean, there's, I think the problems are obviously visually, but then, you know, it's interesting that they were raising the issue that it's, it's proximity to daycare, and so are they concerned about the microwave? I mean.
Well, that's what I, I was questioned about, exactly.
Yeah, because it's one thing to receive a microwave beam, we're all exposed to it, and if you have an antenna, you can receive it, but, but to transmit it, you're concentrating that beam to, you know, send it out. That's another issue, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know anything about the dangers or, so I think we need to.
That's why I wanted to, yeah, hear somebody.
I, I thought maybe you were thinking that way, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to find out. That's, that's our job, to find out for. You good? Okay. Is there public, public comment tonight? Anything more? We're good? Okay. So there's no Selectmen's response.